Okay, that was, this is the start of the Tuesday, July 13th, 2021 work session for the Board of Mayor and Alderman. This meeting is called to order at this time. I'm going to call the role of the Alderman. Alderman Barnhill.
Here.
Alderman Martin.
Here.
Alderman Schorr.
Here.
Alderman Speedy.
Here.
Alderman McLendon.
Here.
Alderman Blanton.
Here.
Alderman Peterson.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Berger.
Here.
Looks like everybody's here. Now's an opportunity for citizens to make comments on items that are not on the agenda. I have two speaker cards here, and I would ask them to go ahead and line up. That's Mark Smith and Mr. Mekka, I'm sorry, I apologize for your last name, Meg Chiani?
Yep.
That's close, sorry about that. I'm sorry I didn't meet you beforehand to get it clarified. So please come forward, you have two minutes apiece.
All right, can you hear me okay? All right. I got some packets together, I didn't make enough copies, but I wanted to speak out as the current president of the HOA Board for Liberty Hills against the passing of Resolution 2021-92. What this does is essentially rescind the designation of Liberty Hills Pond as a stormwater retention facility. This was done with supporting evidence in a 2018 flood study that the pond serves no flood purpose or retaining qualities, so the city staff decided to push this resolution forward, and you will be voting on it at 7:00 PM tonight. In the packet, I have an overview of what we've been able to basically gather over the multi-year back and forth with the city to try to get help to maintain the pond and treat the pond, as well as dredge it. On the first page is a summary of what's going on. In the second page, there's screenshots from the flood study that show the surrounding neighborhoods that drain into the pond. And again, my apologies for people that don't have a copy. I did a house count just to kind of put some quantity around what's draining into our pond. So on Google Maps, I did the best I could to draw out the area that floods into the pond. And right now, there's 358 homes to the north, as well as 165 of our own homes that drain into that pond. And I also counted 41-plus businesses. When I was evaluating my own water bill, I noticed a stormwater fee that was placed on my bill, there's a screenshot in there. It's $2.74. So I did some quick math to basically figure out that, you know, the entire area is being charged this fee for stormwater. And from my understanding, it's designated specifically to maintain situations like this, where stormwater is flowing into an area, it needs maintained, gutters need cleared, things like that. So I did some quick math to basically show that, you know, there's been quite a few funds collected since 2004 when this fee was enacted. So the information's there for your review, my time's up. But we would like to ask that as you vote for this resolution, that you be prepared for us to come to ask for help and be open-minded to, you know, allocating some of the stormwater funds to treat Liberty Hills Pond. Thank you.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Firstly, I wanted to thank Mark, and I wanted to thank everyone to reviewing the slides. We worked with our Alderman and the city engineering group, and as you see in the slides, you know, our pond is in severe need of some maintenance work. Regardless of it having been a stream or staying as a pond, you know, there are quite a few concerns with regards to this, as you will see via the evidence provided over here, that it is in, it's definitely in need of some maintenance work. So I just urge you to look at the documents when you're voting tonight, and, you know, if we can come to some sort of a compromise on what, whatever that may be, any help on this is appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item one is a liquor license for Lady Adelia LLC, doing business as Bakehouse. Any questions about that? Next is, number two is liquor license for St. Goose LLC, doing business as St. Goose. Any questions? Number three is liquor license for Bourbon Brothers II LLC. Any questions about that one? And number four is wine and grocery store certificate for the Butcher Block. No questions there. So we'll now start with item five, which is a ordinance 2021-19, an ordinance to rezone .89 acres from residential R1 district to office residential district for the property located east of Franklin Road, south of Country Road, located at 532 Franklin Road, establishing a public hearing for August the 10th, 2021.
Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. The parcel is located within the office residential design concept as defined by Envision Franklin, and the office residential zoning district does require that any new development have the form of a single-family home, but it could be used as office space. So the request for to rezone does meet the recommendations of Envision Franklin, so staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Any questions from staff or comments? Thank you, we'll keep moving along then.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Alderman Martin.
Well, actually, it's not a question, it's just, it's, I'm alarmed at the way this passed the Planning Commission last time, almost without a bat of an eye. And obviously, there are not enough people around here to remember what happened when the development started at the corner of Morris Lane and Franklin Road, when all that development started. And it was, people were afraid that it was going to come all the way down to Franklin, just ooze down. And they said, oh, no, 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 it won't. Well, lo and behold, look at it. You know, we've got office buildings there, multi-story buildings, and each little parcel that comes up and goes into the commercial, even office residential, if you look at that map, I think, what is the purple, Joey? Is that residential?
Civic.
What?
Civic institutional.
No, Plan District.
The blue is civic institutional, so directly south is civic institutional.
Okay, there's, there's a house that is, it's a brown house with, it's been redone, it's very attractive, and it's, it really should be the end of, that should be where the commercial development and the office stops, because it will go down Franklin Road, it will come to Franklin. And they said it wouldn't, and it already is that far. And there were a few residents that opposed it last time at the Planning Commission, but they weren't real assertive about it, and they didn't make their wishes really known. And I am dead against that, because that will creep right down Franklin Road, and before you know it, it will be at Mack Hatcher. We'll have office, we'll have whatever people want to put there. And I'm surprised that the neighbors aren't here screaming about it, because I'm screaming, and I don't even live out there. But I think we just don't remember what was said at the time, that that would not creep down Franklin Road, but it already is. And I am totally against it. I don't care how little that house is, or what it is, it could be, it could be a house, it doesn't have to be an office. But I just feel like nobody remembers that, and I'm really sorry, because that's going to make or break Franklin Road if that starts creeping down the road to Franklin.
Joey, are all those other R1 homes in Envision Franklin, are they identified as office residential? Or how far north and south is Envision Franklin?
I'd have to check the map specifically, but I believe, this parcel was just changed to the office residential design concept this year as part of this process. So I believe-
But Envision Franklin supports it, right?
Yes, Envision Franklin supports this particular rezoning request, but this is as far south as commercial could be proposed according to Envision Franklin.
Yeah, Joey's right. So this request came in by the property owner to change Envision Franklin to office residential at some point last year, and so only this property was changed to office residential on Franklin Road. Up closer to Morris Lane, those are designated as neighborhood mixed use, which promotes a variety of different office, multifamily residential, a combination of various uses. And there is a hard stop on Franklin Road to those, but there is pressure, as Alderman Martin stated, that property owners do want to continue those uses down Franklin Road to sell their properties. But historically, there has been a stop where that ends now, and it's north of Country Road. Those couple parcels right there at Country Road are still designated as residential that are north of this property. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? We'll now go to item six, consideration of ordinance 2021-05, an ordinance to rezone 233.66 acres from agricultural district and civic institutional district to planned development district for several properties located near the intersection of Hillsborough Road and Mack Hatcher Memorial Parkway, Brownland Farm PUD subdivision, establishing a public hearing for September the 14th, 2021. And I think if it's okay with you, we'll pull number seven in with this one, which is the development plan for Brownland Farm PUD subdivisions, Resolution 2021-53 also.
If, if you would like, number eight, I believe, is also part of these, these two projects. It is being requested-
Yes, please.
Okay, it's being requested to only be considered if the former, the last two are approved. So I can explain that again towards the bottom if you'd like.
And if I can just read the caption for the audience, you're wanting to include eight in this discussion, which is Resolution 2021-54, approving a devised redevelopment plan for Christ Community Church for the property located west of Hillsborough Road and south of the Harpeth River. So go ahead, please.
Thank you so much. The proposed design for Brownland Farm meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance, and if proposed on another site, may have had the support of staff. But Envision Franklin places this development in both the conservation subdivision and the conservation design concepts. Conservation subdivision calls for the primary use to be a single-family residential and support secondary uses of multiplexes and duplexes. Additionally, there is a special consideration for this area of the city that also supports townhomes as a secondary use. Conservation does not support any residential uses and only supports recreation, recreational uses that preserve the natural features of the area. This plan includes additional housing types that are not supported by Envision Franklin and shows development encroaching significantly into the conservation design concept. Planning Commission did not support either the rezoning or the associated development plan, and both, and the associated development plan for Christ Community Church only wishes to be considered if both the development plan and rezoning for Brownland Farm is approved. This concludes my small presentation. I'll be available for any questions if you have any.
Okay, I've got three public speakers, but I'd like to hear from the board if they have any questions for staff at this point, or whether they want to go ahead and hear from the speakers.
Speaker first. Speakers first.
Okay.
Many generated questions.
If, I'll need some correction here, possibly, I think Mr. Gamble had requested enough time to make a presentation, I'd given him a time limit, which he knows. And then the other two speakers, I assume, are-
Within it.
Within that same period of time? So that's Mr. Estes, Mr. Casey, and Mr. Gamble, all are within that 10 to 12-minute timeframe? Okay. So introduce yourself, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, my name is Kevin Estes. I'd like to thank the mayor and the Board of Aldermen for listening to us tonight. I'd like to say that I'm a local resident of Middle Tennessee, and that I have worked in Franklin, care about Franklin, and really care what's going to happen here, so I'm very invested in this project. I know everyone here, including the staff, I think, likes the layout, likes the housing types we're proposing, but the major concern of this whole development's floodplain, so I really want to kind of sit here and just very briefly talk about the facts of this site and the floodplain. This site is 223 total acres. Out of that 223 total acres, 183 of these acres sit within the floodplain area today. And it sits within a very impaired floodplain, as I know everyone of the Board and Alderman has been out and seen this site personally. Once developed, this footprint of this development will be 78 acres in total, including the 40 or so acres that are out of the floodplain, and another 38 or so that exist within the floodplain area today, leaving 156-plus acres of publicly accessible, preserved green space, and highly engineered improved floodplain management. In addition, 28 million gallons of additional storage is being provided that will not be sitting elsewhere in the city of Franklin. And I'd like to say that just real quickly again, 28 million additional gallons of floodplain storage that does not exist today will be done on a private taxpayer dollar to improve volume that does not exist in the floodplain in Franklin today. None of the 156 acres that are, we are leaving is accessible to the public today, and our intention is to leave this site in a much improved environmental condition than it is today, and able to withstand flooding in a much more efficient way than current conditions allow. These improvements, once again, are being done by a private entity, we're not asking taxpayer funds for any of this. And to ensure that I'm not just full of hot air, which I got plenty of, we have hired a third-party engineer to review our flood study, we hired Barge to do it, and we've hired Mr. Steve Casey of CEC to review that. We've asked him to speak at the end of the presentation tonight. He will show you the current condition of the floodplain and provide simply his opinion about our plans on the floodplain and its impact on the city of Franklin. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, and thank you, Board of Mayor and Alderman. My name is Greg Gamble, the landscape architect and land planner. I'm going to have to lean in a little bit. Landscape architect and land planner for Brownland Farms master plan. Okay. The property is comprised, as Kevin mentioned, of 233 acres. A portion of this property is currently owned by Christ Community Church. Then Brownland Farm just to the south, adjacent to that. You see Mack Hatcher Parkway right-of-way that's been purchased crossing Brownland Farm in this location. And then there's property that is along the front of Monticello Neighborhood that is also included in this master plan. The intention is to preserve that as a community park. Next slide, please. This was our first master plan that we presented to you at the Joint Conceptual Workshop, February 25th. The response that we heard from the Board of Mayor and Alderman and the Planning Commissioners at that time was that the development footprint should feel lighter on the land, that it felt as though too much floodplain was being manipulated, that there was an appropriate, that there is an appropriate development pattern for Brownland Farms, it just might not be this because of those first two reasons. And then filling of the split, which is the floodway, was a concern that was discussed as well. We revised the master plan, we had multiple meetings with the community following the revision of this master plan. As Kevin mentioned, the development footprint has been reduced from about 90 acres to about 75 acres, leaving an additional 15 acres of floodplain outside of the development footprint. Brownland Farms today is currently, as you all know, a horse equestrian facility. They have about 12 shows per year, they have about 2,500 visitors per event, about 400 to 500 trailers that park on the property for each one of those events as well. It was mentioned at our Joint Conceptual Workshop that we should take consideration of preserving character and history of what Brownland Farms is. On the next slide. However, there are impediments to the existing floodway and floodplain on the property. These are structures, fences, things that have been built on Brownland over the years that create those obstructions in the floodplain. Next. This is a viewing berm that has been built at Brownland Farms. The white line that you're seeing here is the location of about the location of the 100-year floodplain on the Harpeth River. So you can start to see how removal of some of these berms and hills and obstacles that are on Brownland can actually be improvements to the property. Next slide, please. There's also storage of vehicles that are located alongside the Mack Hatcher right-of-way that need to be removed. Next. And there's mucked horse stalls that are piled up on the property as well. Again, here's the 100-year floodplain line, these are about 30 to 35-foot in height that again create obstruction in the floodplain. Okay? This is a photograph taken from the 2010 flood. On the bottom portion here of the property, you see the Mack Hatcher right-of-way. You also see this area here that's not covered in water. And what's happening is that the river is coming along this tree line and spilling over here alongside Riser Point, it's not able to make the turn around the bend because of the grading and because of these berms that have been built over time as a part of farming operations and a part of the equestrian. Okay? This is a section through the site. On top, you're seeing the existing condition. Right here's the mucked berm, the Harpeth River, and this is the actual grading profile of that area located just below Mack Hatcher Parkway. What we're proposing to do is to lower the grade in this location so that the water can actually make the turn around the bend in the river at a slower speed, improving how the floodplain works in this area, positively affecting Riser Point and these new neighborhoods. Okay, next? So today, we have 19% of the flow of a storm event going north through this Monticello open space. We have 5% of the flow that is happening across the church's parking lot, and we have 60, or 76% of the flow that is making that bend around the river. And because it's being obstructed here, it's ending up flying out and around the north side of Riser Point. So the removal of the obstacles that are across Brownland, as well as the berming, will positively affect the flow of the river. The end result is based upon a calculated, engineered design, very similar to the floodplain manipulation of Wood Duck Court, Berry Farms, Splinter Ridge, Lad Park, Water's Edge, and even the Southeast Park that's under design now. Each of those are creating designed floodplanes that leave the environment better, that improve the quality of life of the entire community. As Kevin mentioned earlier, this site, once it's designed, once the floodplain is engineered and designed, will have 28 million gallons of additional storage that will benefit not Brownland Farms, but benefit the entire community. Steve Casey, as Kevin mentioned, was our third-party reviewer, and he has a couple of comments as it relates to the floodplain review that he conducted.
Thank you. Again, my name's Steve Casey, civil engineer with Civil and Environmental Consultants. And at the suggestion of the city of Franklin, we were hired by the developer to perform a third-party review. We did that review, and I issued a couple of technical memos as part of that, but I wanted to explain just briefly what we were looking at. We were focused on the technical aspects of the flood study and comparing that to FEMA guidelines and requirements, as well as the city of Franklin's flood damage prevention ordinance. We were checking the model for consistency between what was modeled in the software versus what was in the plans that we were provided. And we were also checking for things like the floodplain compensation for filling in the floodplain, that sort of thing. And as I mentioned, we prepared a couple of technical memos. The latest technical memo was issued at end of June, and we, in our opinion, the model is in, it does match what is in the plans, with some very minor comments that we mentioned. Those types of comments would be things that would normally be addressed during a conditional letter of map revision review process that FEMA would make. And so I think our doing this review only helps to streamline that submittal to FEMA, because FEMA is also going to have to review this. The result of that model is that there were just some very slight rises in the floodplain of less than .01 feet. My understanding is the consultant, Barge Design, is working to tweak the design to eliminate those. We have not seen that yet, but that is, that is what I understand. And with that, I'll take any questions.
I've got the Vice Mayor, and then I'll ask Alderman Martin next. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Casey, I've got a couple of questions for you. So, thank you for that information, it was very helpful. But with the 28 million gallons of additional floodplain storage, can you give me a brief overview or explanation of what that means for the storage? What does that actually do besides store the water, but how does it flow out, and how does it get in and out of that property with that manipulation of the floodplain? How does that benefit the entire community in the area? Because we know we've had flooding in Fieldstone and Cottonwood years ago, and continue to do so. So how does that benefit? You talked about the volume, you talked about the flow, I was very interested in the bend around the river. So the volume doesn't change at all, I wouldn't think at all, it would not change the volume, but how would that affect the area to get that water around the bend? And how, I'm mostly concerned at how it affects outside the actual brownland property in the area for the residents that live there who are concerned about flooding. So, and then I just want you to add in something about FEMA, and I'll ask you that in just a second.
Okay. So the question about the floodplain compensation, let me make sure I understand your question.
I'm looking for the benefit for the residents-
Okay.
-of how that flow doesn't change the volume, but how does that manipulation of the flow, changing it around the river, how does that benefit outside of the property?
So currently, as the previous slide showed, flow is able to cross through an east trib, it's called in the model, and a west trib. And as you all are aware, the west trib has been eliminated in the proposed model. Therefore, you know, more water is heading down the main stem of the river. And then, so there's a little bit more water, I think it was 82% versus 76% right now of the flow is heading down that main stem because of the elimination of that western trib. However, what the proposed design does is it's lowering the ground elevation, the existing ground elevation, in the vicinity of the Mack Hatcher right-of-way to facilitate higher flood events that come out of the banks of the Harpeth to go across that land, where currently, or I think Greg showed in a 2010 aerial- Where currently, or I think Greg showed in a 2010 aerial, there were some high spots that were still dry, those would be lowered. And so water would be able to more efficiently go across that land. There would also be more volume, or more, because the ground is lowered, more water can get stored in those areas without raising the elevation of the water surface. So it benefits the surrounding communities by virtue of the model showing that there's, like I said, there's a couple of places where there was a .01 foot, or less than a .01 foot rise. But the modeling shows that by virtue of that increased cut in the existing ground, they're able to not have that impact other properties.
So the development here, what you're proposing with all the manipulation of the floodplain and everything, and supposedly you're improving the floodplain improvement by 150%, that is not going to impact adversely the other communities that have experienced flooding and possibly might make some improvement?
Yes. I think that's a fair statement to say yes to. And let me add that this may help. Part of the requirements of a flood study is to tie into the existing elevations upstream and downstream. And this model that Barge Design produced does that. In the proposed condition, there is not an increase in the base flood elevation or the 100-year floodplain elevation downstream of the project or upstream of the project. As I mentioned, there are a couple of places within the project limits where there's that .01, less than .01 foot rise that I understand they're still working to get rid of. But where it ties in, it's tying into what is currently regulated as the floodplain elevation.
Okay. And then the last question I had is you have to submit this to FEMA, and FEMA could come back and say what to you, what are their options? Yes and no?
Yes. I mean, and as one who has submitted colomars to FEMA myself, yes, they will have comments. They do a very thorough review. I think that this model, as I mentioned, except for a few things that I pointed out in the last technical memo, meets the requirements, in our opinion, CEC's opinion, of FEMA. But yes, they will, they will have the opportunity to make additional comments.
All right. So you think it meets their criteria, but you will know, once it's submitted to them, they'll come back with comments?
Yes.
Can they recommend changes or recommend no-go totally?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Alderman Martin.
I hate to ask you this, Mr. Casey, but could you very briefly say, repeat what you said at the end of your presentation? You said, but you hadn't seen it yet. What is it you haven't seen?
Yeah, good question. I'm sorry. The model, when I reviewed it last, I had, our company, we had a few comments, and one of those related to, there was a couple of places within the development that had a less than a .01 foot rise above the currently effective 100-year floodplain elevation. My understanding is Barge Design is working on changing the design to eliminate those rises. And so there would be no increase above the currently enforceable effective 100-year floodplain. I have not seen that model yet.
Now, I have just one quick question. People are saying to us, citizens are saying to us, they're continuing to say they're concerned about the floodplain. I mean, it doesn't stop. And what I want to know is, do they not believe you? Do they not believe the study? Or do they, are they not listening? I mean, I don't, I don't know why, when you explain something and you show them proof, why is there still a question about it?
If I, I can offer my opinion on that. The 100-year 24-hour design storm upon which these 100-year floodplains are based is just that. It's a designed storm, which in this part of the state is around eight inches of rain falling in a day. There are lots of different parameters, including rainfall intensity, when is the last time it rained, and then it rains again, obstructions in the floodplain that maybe are temporary, and maybe they're gone one time here, another time. There's so many variables that people's experience of the floodplain can change and will not be the same all the time. And, you know.
Of course not.
Yeah. So I just offer that up to say, there's all sorts of different parameters that are in play.
This is, this is a question in my mind about why we don't understand that when things are explained and shown to us, why we can't accept it. Do we think you're lying?
I hope not.
Never mind.
Other questions from the board? I've got Alderman Planton, and then Alderman Peterson.
I don't really have a question. I just, on the heels of what you just said, I think if you look historically at the other places around the city that have, that have had the same, I'll use the word treatment with the cut and fill. I think the difference for me, Margaret, here is that people are so attached to Brownland Farms and the fact that it's been historically in the same vein used. And I think it's fear of change, in my opinion, is part of it, is why it's not being accepted.
Alderman Peterson.
I might even make a comment about some of those last things. But my question is, you know how the Harpeth River is not exactly like a lot of other rivers? I mean, it has all those little curves, and this is by no means the only place where it curves very strangely.
Excuse me, Alderman Peterson. Would you mind pulling that microphone a little bit closer so we can all hear you?
Okay. As I say, the Harpeth River has so many curves in it, it is not like many other rivers. And as I say, this is not the only place. If you look at this, it curves many, many different places. But I, my first question was, would it be possible to find out an example of another river, doesn't have to be the Harpeth, where this extensive a change was made in a curve in the river? Because if you, if you stop and think about it, if the river gets to a certain height, it's just going to go directly across, and, I mean, it's going to cut off the curve. And so what I would like to know is, are there some other projects, as I say, don't have to be on the Harpeth River, where this much of a change has been made into such a curve that is not usual? And so I would be interested in finding that out, not necessarily that you could answer right now, but I'm just saying that would be important to me. And just to make a comment about some of the other things about people not wanting to believe it or being attached and everything, the comment that you made right before that is that the, you know, the 100-year flood, it might be different every single different time something like that occurs. It's just like in the 2010 flood, all the, let's see, it really, it rained in Franklin, but it didn't rain in the upper part of the river so that it had accumulated by the time it got to Franklin. Going further downriver from Franklin, that's where you had all of the big flooding. I mean, it was bad flooding here, but I mean, you had infinitely worse flooding down there. So what I'm saying is, it's not just, you know, if somebody's saying, well, unless it's a 100-year flood, it's not going to do any damage, because every one of them is different, every, every one of the occurrences is different. But, but the other thing is, there are a lot of things that come into play, and I think people are concerned about what might happen, you know? But I've been very interested in finding an example of a place where there was a change in a very extreme curve in the river that we could look at, as I say, it doesn't have to be around here.
Alderman Speedy, then I've got Alderman Schorer.
So some of the questions, but, you know, I guess the emails we do get from Fieldstone Farms and Cottonwood, is it any development at all is going to increase the flooding for their neighborhoods? I guess, can you address that? And then also, we talk about the 100-year flood event. I guess there's a chance it could be a 500-year event. I guess, right, Houston was a 500-year event. So if that happened, what does that look like on this piece of property? Or is that even remotely feasible to answer? Because I know the homes are going to be built, what, three foot above the 100-year floodplain? How does that relate to a 200-year event?
I'm going to answer your second question first, and then I'll leave it to Steve. Kevin has taken that seriously as well. And we'll be designing all of the lots at the 500-year storm event. Franklin currently requires that the lots be outside of the 100-year floodplain, so they could be at 101. The 500-year floodplain on this property is two feet higher than the 100-year floodplain. So the lots will be built at that level. And then the city has a requirement that the finished floor elevation be three feet above the 100-year floodplain, and we'll comply with that as well. But I'll leave you.
Could you reiterate that one more time? So five feet above the 100-year floodplain?
No. The house finished floor elevation has to be three foot above the 100-year, one foot above the 500-year. And we're going to be developing and building these lots at the 500-year level. Many of the homes that are in Cottonwood and in Fieldstone Farms are actually in the 100-year floodplain. That is not what we're doing.
May I make a comment about that particular thing you said?
Absolutely.
Whenever those lots in Fieldstone Farm were passed, not a one of them was in the 100-year floodplain. Since they were built, the floodplain, has changed, I mean, let me see, the mapping of the floodplain has changed, because as I say, when every single lot in Fieldstone was approved, it was not in the floodplain at that time.
Alderman Schorer, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Two, maybe three points, I'll try to be brief. One is, I know, I know enough about water being really dangerous, which is nothing. None of us sitting on this board, I think, know much technical about water. And, and I know we've got experts, I know Barge is great, CEC's great, and, and, you know, to some degree, we have to rely on the experts as to what they, as to what they're saying. And Margaret, I, you know, I get that people don't believe it. So it's hard for us to say, no, we don't do it, because we don't, we're afraid it's going to flood again. Well, that's why we hire experts. And if you'll notice in the, in the notes from the city, they don't mention flooding as a reason for denial. And I need to talk about that for a second. That's not part of this issue, as far as their request. And, and the other thing is, I think if you follow the, if you follow what they're doing, they're trying to improve. They can't, if there's a thousand-year flood, they can't stop it, and, and no one can. But they're, they are, in my opinion, from what I read, making it better. Now, if we don't approve it, then it's going to be exactly the way it is right now, and all those places are going to flood. So, you know, and it'll be much worse than if, than if something is approved. Now, having put that aside, then, then really, our issue shouldn't be, I don't think, shouldn't be whether or not we believe the experts, which I think we probably should, is do we want to approve this based upon recommendations that it's not in, it's not approved by envisioned Franklin? I mean, that's really our look at the, you know, so we should look at it that way. That hadn't even been mentioned yet in this discussion. And is really, to me, the issue more important than anything else? Should we, again, you know, modify, not modify, but go against the recommendation of staff and the planning commission to do something that's in violation of envisioned Franklin? And, and to me, that's the discussion. We talk about water all we want, but we're guessing. And this part, with, which is what staff is recommending, it's, we're not guessing. We know exactly what they're planning. We know exactly what they're going to build, and we know exactly what envisioned Franklin says. So our question is, is, is should we, should we approve it, modify it, or whatever? We haven't had that discussion yet, so.
Any other comments or questions? Ready to move on? We'll continue to move forward.
May I say one last thing? Yes. I was just going to say, the envisioned Franklin is a plan. It is just somebody's idea that the planning commission went through and more or less agreed with. But I can tell you, I voted on it, and every time I look at it, I see something I hadn't seen as many times as I've read through the thing. But what I'm saying is, envisioned Franklin is, as I say, a concept. It is not an absolute rule.
So are we moving on? Are we moving on for this entire six, seven, eight, or are we going on to the PUD discussion?
I'm getting ready to go to nine, but we can hang around these for a little while longer.
What Alderman Schorer was talking about, like, I'd like to have some of those conversations while they're here about what, why is it not meeting envisioned Franklin? Is it the condo versus townhome? Because condos one level, and townhouses is three? And is it, are we going to allow 460 homes here, or 360, or 260? Or do we need to move this on so we can get FEMA and FEMA approval? Because if we just shoot it down, we're never going to get the FEMA or FEMA approval. And then we can never decide if the PUD is worth voting on.
Amy, go ahead.
Well, sure, I can address the issue of envisioned Franklin. Alderman Peterson, you're right, this is a guiding document. It's not the zoning ordinance, it's a guiding document.
Amy?
Amy, we can't hear you answer that.
Oh, sorry. I thought I was close enough. Okay, let me start again. Envision Franklin, as Alderman Peterson suggested, is a guiding document. It's how developers can expect what they can or cannot build. It's not the zoning ordinance, but it is that guiding document to give transparency to developers on knowing what they could develop. In terms of this plan, it's in two different design concepts. Conservation is one of the design concepts. That conservation design concept area coincides with the floodplain. And what envisioned Franklin says is that you should not build anything other than low passive recreational uses there. So for this plan, anywhere that they're manipulating the floodplain and pulling that out, they're not changing that conservation design concept. So there's about 35 acres that have lots on them that doesn't align with envisioned Franklin's goal for that area.
So if we follow envisioned Franklin, though, it almost sounds like it's handcuffing us to not make improvements to the flood storage area there. Is it saying to not change it? But they're saying, yes, they want to change it to improve the storage.
Envision Franklin says to protect and preserve the existing environmental features in that area. Conservation covers not just floodplain, but hillsides, riparian buffers, everything that's sort of environmentally sensitive. And so that's the guidance. We've heard that from our citizens, and when we went through the review process as envisioned Franklin, we heard, and it's not a new concept either. We've always heard that, that we want to preserve our areas.
So right now, we can almost make an argument, we're preserving some man-made berms that were built up on this piece of property?
That's exactly.
You can make that. I mean, I think, I think there's still ways to develop this property and stay out of the existing floodplain. It's the, the other part of this property is in conservation subdivision design concept. That's a design concept that says preserve 50% of the open space, and then you can do single-family residential as your primary use. You can also build small-scale multiplexes, which would be duplexes or quads, like a unit that looks like a house but has four units inside. And in this area of the city, there's a special consideration that says you could also do townhomes. So where this plan doesn't meet conservation subdivision design concept is their introduction of a multifamily product. They have
Is it condos versus townhomes?
No. It is a big multifamily building. They have three or four, shoot, I can't remember.
And are those for sale or all rentals, I guess?
Staff doesn't consider that. You'll have to ask that question to the applicant. The buildings are, there's three buildings, they're two and a half stories, and they have roughly 22 units each in them. That's where staff says that goes against conservation subdivision design concept. That product is not along this section of Hillsborough Road, and that's inappropriate for the design.
When we look at townhomes, what's the, what's the normal units in a townhome? Is it like eight or?
Six.
Six.
The max that you're allowed in one section is six in a row.
Six. And they're looking at 22 on that multifamily?
They're looking at 22 units in a two and a half-story building.
Townhomes can be two stories, three stories?
Townhomes can be two stories or two, in this section of town, I'm sorry, in a planned unit development, the max they can be is two and a half stories in this area. So they could have two and a half-story townhomes, that building is only six units long. Whereas, the buildings that they have on this plan, again, are larger, and they have more units in them. And that's just not something that's along this stretch of Hillsborough Road.
So, again, just so I can kind of, in my mind, if you had six townhomes, and the townhome is three stories.
Yeah.
If the other building was only one floor each, and it was six, could there theoretically be 18 units in that multifamily compared to six townhomes? Like, if they were all one-level units in that building? Does that make sense?
I think it makes sense. I think you could have a multifamily building that is similar in scale
Okay.
to a six-unit townhome building. The buildings that they are proposing are larger than what that maximum six-unit townhome could probably be.
50%? Or do we know, kind of, 10%?
I mean, I think based on what they have, I couldn't tell you, I'd have to eyeball it on the plan. Sorry.
We're going to ask the developer.
Yeah.
Exactly. So, our six-unit townhomes are 24-foot by 105-foot of building. So 144-foot long, 105-foot deep, two and a half stories. That is about 52,000 square foot, if you, no, that's not right. 144 by 105, times two and a half. Our condos, if that's the question, we will make sure that the condo buildings are no longer than 144. They're only 70-foot deep. They're not deeper than 70-foot. Because when you sell a condo, they're only about 35, 36-foot deep, and then they're wide, like 35 or 40-foot wide. That's how every condo is set up. They're not magical. So a lot of condo buildings are smaller than townhome units. The difference is, I think, what Amy was saying, and I want to be fair to Amy, because she's always fair to us, we have one building that is smaller, and then we have two buildings that are kind of L-shaped, which would be larger. So to be fair to Amy, she's absolutely correct. But for your, what your comment was, if that's the discussion, we need to do five buildings that are smaller so that they look just like the townhomes. Great. We tried to pull, listen to the BOMA, and pull 20 acres of floodplain away, leave it natural. So out of 156 acres floodplain, we're leaving great majority of it alone. We're not touching it. We're focused all our floodplain over on the other side of Mack Hatcher. And once again, I've heard a lot of stuff, I'm going to sit here and try to say, 28 million gallons more water tomorrow is better than not having 28 million gallons of storage today. No matter what, it's 28 million more gallons of storage you get on our dime. And water's edge is exactly like this. So, I'm sorry.
At our neighborhood meetings, and we've had multiple neighborhood meetings...
I've got, Alderman, Vice Mayor Berger wants to ask a question.
Sure.
Okay, well, I want to hear what you have to say, too. First of all, I've heard the word protect and preserve, but I've never heard the word improve. I'm interested in improvement here, and I want that included with that. Great do we preserve, great do we protect. But I want improvement, and I'm hearing a lot of improvement here, so I'm interested in that, to see how that works on that site, and helps the area. The other thing is, there's, you know, I think you can play around with that, and sometimes it just comes down to semantics. I mean, tit for tat for, you know, how long? You know, is it two feet too wide? Is it two feet too long? Is it 10 feet too wide? I think, if we want to get that technical and be that precise about it, then I think this developer needs to change it and go along with what's approved in envisioned Franklin on that. The other thing, how much, Greg, can you answer, how much open space remains? And I do believe you had all-for-sale units and no rentals. Was that correct?
That is correct. Everything that you're seeing as a part of the development plan is for sale.
Good.
There is a...
Open space.
Yeah, total of, I believe, 67% open space, which is 150, between 156, 157 acres of land.
Another question we heard a lot of emails about is the safety, if there was a flood...
Speaking of the microphone, Scott, if you don't mind.
Sure. We hear a lot of emails about the safety, that if you build this development and it floods, there's no way out. I'm assuming the roads would also be at the 500-foot floodplain event, so that...
I believe that the main concern, if you don't mind going back one slide for me, is regarding the fact that at Potteet Place, just south of Potteet Place, there's a bridge right here, and at that crossing, it's below the 100-year floodplain. On Mack Hatcher, to the east of this site, there's a portion of Mack Hatcher near Cheekwood Golf Club, near the Williamson County Athletic Facility, where it's below the 100-year floodplain. There are portions of the intersection here, especially...
Greg, if you don't mind pointing that one back there, we can't see that one.
Thank you.
So there are portions of Hillsborough Road right here that have about 12 inches of water during the high point, the peak. We did meet with Andy King about this, and he's satisfied with the results of the discussions that we had. Not sure that he's here to speak on that. But Mack Hatcher Parkway, the new section, is completely out of the 100-year floodplain. So you can leave this site, get to Mack Hatcher Parkway and exit. Do you mind if I make one quick statement?
You have 10 seconds.
Very fast. So...
Go ahead.
During our neighborhood meetings, meetings with the church, early on, we talked about providing homes at a more affordable level. And homes that would have elevator access with living on one floor. When those were removed from our plan, it frustrated several people who were very interested in having that as a part of our plan. We've added that back in as the condos. If you'll go forward one slide. This is, this is perfect. This is a condo building, built in the character and form of townhomes. And that's what Kevin was trying to describe. This is actually from Berry Farms. It's a condo building. It has 16 units in it today, and has no maintenance obligations to its residents on the outside. But again, this is for sale, not for rent. Thank you, Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman.
My question to staff is, what would, what changes would be necessary to this proposal to receive staff's endorsement?
Well, we base our recommendations on envisioned Franklin, so they would have to remove all of the lots proposed in the existing floodplain today. And they would have to remove the multifamily units.
At least the size and scale of the family, of the multifamily?
They would have to turn the multifamily buildings into townhome units, and make them a max of six, because they would have to be townhome units, not multifamily units.
Okay. So let me take the first one. How many lots, so there's, it appears to me that there's a great deal of cut, fill, manipulation on which nothing will be built at all.
That they're proposing.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And this 28 million gallons of storage, a lot of that is by essentially deconstructing, it appears, I could be wrong, but it looks like a lot of that is deconstructing man-made mounds.
Mm-hmm.
Is that accurate?
It sounds like it from their explanation, yes.
Okay. But there are a few dozen lots that are being reclaimed
Yes.
as part of that manipulation.
There's an attachment on, I believe, the development plan in your staff report. I don't know if you can pull that up. And it's an exhibit where I highlighted that. So you could see exactly on their plan, in blue, where those lots are.
Okay.
I don't know if we can get it pulled up. But that would give you a better understanding. I didn't do the count, or I don't have it memorized, but it would show you, this called floodplain disturbance, Branland Farms, I believe. So there's their plan today. And the blue is floodplain that is existing today. So for staff to support it, there should be no development in that area, based on the guidance of envisioned Franklin.
Okay, so dozens of lots?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Out of, I mean, maybe dozens. And then, the other thing was the product to be built would have to be changed from multifamily to townhouse.
Yes, you can see, I don't have a pointer, but there's three buildings that are larger. These three buildings right here.
And the problem with those, the problem with those buildings, as far as compliance with envisioned Franklin, is their mass? Is their scale?
As they're, they're calling them multifamily buildings, and it's generally the mass. Multifamily buildings can be smaller. In the zoning ordinance, they can be as few as five units. But the form is different than a townhome. So it's about the...
How?
Townhomes are supposed to have individually designed facades. Multifamily buildings can have more of a general design on their facade, so the building is allowed to sort of represent a single mass, versus townhomes are supposed to look like a series of...
Is there any, is there any part of this envisioned Franklin, the conflict with envisioned Franklin that has to do with a, a unit being three floors vertical versus, like, instead of, let's say you had three units?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any part of envisioned Franklin that is problematic for this plan, that has to do with there being, for example, the difference between three units that are three stories or two stories that are vertical but lined up next to each other, versus three units that are one on top of another?
Yes. Multifamily units can be one on top of the other. Townhomes have to be side by side. If you wanted to do an up-down unit, envisioned Franklin would suggest that you use big houses or quadplexes to maintain, to achieve that goal, or a triplex or a duplex.
And would envisioned Franklin permit that on this location?
Yes. Envision Franklin would allow for quads, triplexes, or duplexes here.
And that, and then we would go back to the scale, instead of having 22 units in a building, you would have more like four?
You would have four, and you, if they needed to maintain the density, you would have multiples of those versus one large.
So envisioned Franklin, set aside the floodplain issue, the form and label that gets attached to the product, that they could arrive at, like I said, set aside the floodplain issue. They could arrive perhaps at the same number of units in compliance with envisioned Franklin if they made, instead of several large buildings, more smaller buildings that complied with one regime or the other, the townhomes or the multiplex.
Correct. Because of the efficiency of scale of a larger building, I doubt they would get exactly the same number.
But...
But they could get a large majority of them, I would think.
Okay.
But they'd also have to have a lot of them in the floodplain.
Well, setting is, I'm not, I'm not trying to get, I'm not expressing an opinion about the outcome at all. I'm just trying to make sure I understand. The, whatever the, whatever the maximum number of units would be without the floodplain, it might be close if they, there is a, there is a way for the developer to comply with the vision Franklin. It's just not these bigger masked buildings with multiple units.
Correct.
And if they wanted to have layers of units as opposed to, say, slices of units, they could do that.
There's a product to do that, yes.
On this location?
On this location.
Okay.
Alderman, speedy.
Could you quickly address, and this may be more for Lisa Clayton, and the greenways, if this was allowed to be developed, it's my understanding there'd be significant more greenways along the Harpeth River. Like, right now, I guess you could access Bicentennial Park and take those trails all the way to the rec center. I guess with the new Mack Hatcher in this development, would that connect all that and our master parks, planning trails, greenway?
You will have connections all the way to the rec center from Harlinsdale and all the way to Cool Springs. However, it would go through county property, and you would have to cross over to Hillsborough. But those connections might be through sidewalks, but it would connect over, as part of the Parkland impact fee, which is the next item, they are proposing almost three miles of trails along the Harpeth and throughout their park system for this development. So it would connect, and then there's another connection later on, down through Mack Hatcher, as Mack Hatcher has the multi-purpose trail system. We also have offshoots of trails through other neighborhoods, so...
And the greenway would be mostly on the north side of the river? I think, is there also a bridge on the property that would be accessible, maybe? A pedestrian bridge? Would be turned into a pedestrian bridge, maybe?
I don't know if, I don't believe there's one plan for this particular development, but there's always possibilities later on of looking at where that needs to connect to either church property or later park, future city property.
Go ahead, Alderman.
There's two questions. In order to satisfy envisioned Franklin, how much for reduction in number of units are we talking about?
You know, I apologize, I did not count those up. It would be the, all of the lots in blue. I want to guess there was, I did count them once, I just don't want to guess. I thought it was like 50.
Okay. Second thing is this. As far as flooding is concerned, and I understand, because I read these emails, and I read, I try to read as much as I can between the lines on the emails, whatever, but is Fieldstone Farms cottonwood? Which is they better off? Are they better off with a plan like that, that gives 28 million gallons of storage? Or are they better off leaving it alone?
That's not my area of expertise. I don't want to answer that question. We could ask engineering, potentially. I don't know if they can answer that question.
That's fine, I don't mind asking engineering. Because I, because I have an understanding that that does not adversely affect Fieldstone Farms or cottonwood or what's downstream. And if I listened to the presentation just a few minutes ago, that's what I gathered from that presentation. Is that, is that a fair summation?
Yeah, I'll let Steve Casey answer that one.
Paul?
I'd just say, we work with Barge, and we work with CC, they're more of the experts. I'm going to let Steve Casey answer this, but what I didn't hear was an improvement. I did hear an offset, so I'll let Steve address that.
So I think the best way to answer that is, as I mentioned previously, the hydraulic model ties into the existing effective 100-year floodplain elevation upstream and downstream in Barge's proposed conditions model that accounts for this development. However, I will say, additional storage here, I would view as a positive.
Okay.
However, the hydraulic model is, it's calculating from downstream to upstream, that's just the way this model works. And so, it's, there's not a change reflected in the hydraulic model. It's basically a net zero in that regard.
Thank you.
I have one question I'd like to ask that gentleman.
Go ahead.
28 million sounds like a lot. Give me some, something to compare it to. I mean, you know, something is big until you put it next to something big.
Right.
Well, how about this? A football field, how deep?
If I can do some math quickly.
Sure. I mean, it's not going to take you 10 minutes, right?
No, it shouldn't take me 10 minutes.
So if we covered a football field with 28 million gallons of water, how deep is that?
Can you compare it to what we process at the water treatment plant? 16...
Well, yeah, but that's, I mean, I'm just trying to get, like, several hundred acres, so on a football field...
Just very quick math, and please, someone check me.
You mean, we aren't prepared for the football field question?
So if a football field measures 300 feet long by 150 feet wide, I'm guessing on the width. If that were one foot deep, that would be roughly 336,000 gallons of water.
Oh.
So...
Wow.
Yeah, divide 28 million...
So a football field covered...
28 million?
83 feet deep.
And so what would the pressure be at your bottom on that football field?
It's like I'm taking my PE exam.
28 million by 336?
A lot.
Everybody got all their questions answered? It's 100 football fields.
Ready to move on? Item nine. This has to do with the Parkland impact fee and construction agreement between the City of Franklin and Miles River Partners LLC. Lisa Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor. What's... What's proposed is 472 dwelling units for a total impact fee of $2,031,488. They are proposing public parks over three miles of, uh, public trails along the Harpeth and including in their, um, private amenity areas. They may receive eligible, they are eligible to receive up to 75% of an offset. Staff recommends approval and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, item 10 was the City of Franklin contract 2021-0098, a utility relocation agreement with Atmos Energy Corporation for the state route 96 West, multi-use trail project phase one and two via drive to Fifth Avenue North, $116,000. Any question about that one? Item 11 is a resolution 2021-105, resolution to award the construction contract to same construction company for the Freedom Ballfields project in the amount of $6,132,200. Any questions about that one? Okay, we'll go to item 12, which is amendment two to the City of Franklin contract 2018-0259, the agreement for fire station seven to allow for change of the legal name of the contractor from Southland Constructors to W.E. O'Neill Construction of Tennessee. Apparently it was a merger. Any questions about that? Item 13 is a final change order to City of Franklin contract 2018-0259 with W.E. O'Neill Construction, uh, Company of Tennessee formerly known as Southland Constructors in the amount of $15,506.64 for fire station number seven. Final contract is amended with $6,802,51.44. Everybody good with that? Okay. Good comments, Brad. We're now going to go- We're now going to go to item 14, which is consideration of a ground lease between the Water Management Department of the City of Franklin and Cheekwood Golf Club to lease 54.12 acres of city property located along the southern right-of-way of Mack Hatcher Parkway at its intersection with Spencer Creek Drive.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to refuse myself from the dais.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I'd like to make a quick comment before I turn it loose. Basically, we're talking about the lease and, uh, four years ago, we authorized in a resolution that the city administrator and city attorney would negotiate, uh, the lease for this property and so on. I, I look tonight as this is an update, uh, from the Cheekwood team to tell us, uh, where these items are as far as the contract and give the board an update. Since we're negotiating, uh, with Cheekwood, I'm not really looking for input from the board, but this is more for informational purposes and feel free to correct me if I'm wrong about that statement. Also, I think that tonight, I'm understanding that they're going to present some of the concepts, uh, of what they're looking at, uh, to construct on the property. We had hoped to have some, it's my understanding, at least from a conversation today, that, uh, hopefully we'll be seeing the difference between, uh, what many of us have called top golf and actually what they're trying to present to us. It's my understanding that Mr. Hale is going to go over some of the points in the contract to inform the board. It's my understanding that Nicholas Goff is here somewhere in the audience and they're going to update us on some of their concepts. Uh, and then, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Pratt, who was here a minute ago, was going to maybe, uh, make a closing comment. So, given that, I think I allowed you about 12 minutes. I'm, I'm free to give a little more liberty if need be, but I'd like to, for you to stick to that as best you can, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, your, uh, assessment of all that is, I think, is on point. Doug Hale, on behalf of Cheekwood Golf Club LP, uh, 9/26/17, the city approves a resolution to authorize Administrator Stuckey to negotiate, attempt to negotiate a lease contract with my client. 4/28/20, city adopted another resolution seeking approval from the state to amend its charter to engage in a lease, uh, up to 50 years. At the time, it was not permitted to do that and that was the term of the lease that applicant sought. I don't know the date because I couldn't get my hands on it, but latter part of 2020, the state did approve, the city amending its charter to allow it to enter into a lease contract up to 50 years. On December 15th, it was about the time the state did its, had its action, I delivered to the city my initial draft of the proposed ground lease. Now, my comments are only on the ground lease. And, and, uh, and I want to say at the get-go that I've, I've enjoyed working with staff and particularly Ms. Billingsley on this. She's been very professional, very responsive, albeit we're not in agreement on several points. Okay. Now, between June, uh, December 15th of 20 and June 20th of this year, eight different variations of the ground lease have been exchanged between the city and myself. Somewhat frustrating for both sides. On July the 7th of this year, just a few days ago, city and the applicant participated in a joint video/audio conference to try to address the status of this lease. It was felt at that point, I'm just paraphrasing conversations, that could we at this meeting present four or five of the material points to this lease that seem to be frustrating the parties successfully reaching a conclusion on the negotiation? And that's what I'm going to do. While there are other less significant issues to be resolved, we're confident those will be resolved in a commercially reasonable manner and in a timely manner. Even, here are the four issues. Even though the height of the building you're going to see in a few minutes, proposed to be constructed by the tenant is in keeping with the height of the city's two downtown parking garages and is in keeping with the recently approved development at Harpeth Square and is in keeping with the height of the Franklin First United Methodist Church lying adjacent to this site, staff is objecting to the height of our building. So there is an issue. How high can our building be? Even though there are a number, a multitude of retail civic and athletic businesses and venues in downtown Franklin and within the perimeter of the bypass that are open till 10 to 11 o'clock at night and in some cases, much later, staff is objecting to the business of the tenant being open after dusk on any night. There's an issue. Even though there are a multitude of retail and civic athletic businesses and venues in downtown Franklin and within the bypass perimeter that are open late in the evening, a number of those, nine we believe from my count, in around downtown Main Street, serve wine, beer, and alcohol until closing. And in some cases, on the sidewalks of downtown Franklin until closing. Staff is objecting to the tenant serving any wine, beer, or alcohol during its hours of operation. There's an issue. Lastly, even though the city's charter has been amended to accommodate a 50-year lease, the catalyst of which was this applicant, staff proposes that the city enjoy a unilateral right of termination of this lease at any time during the 50 years. That is a huge impediment to obtaining financing for this project. The right to terminate is coupled with what I believe is a minimal amount of notice and minimal amount of consideration in form of financial compensation. All of which, and to all four of these, we have responded with lease proposal, in some ways compromising, at some point now, we're just kind of stuck. So we're hoping for some sort of direction. Both sides are, I believe, some sort of direction on these four issues. One thing that, that was not on the list that I gave to, uh, city attorney today, I just want to make a reference to. A remark came up from our last meeting on July the 7th, the video conference, that, well, what are we going to do with this building when the lease is over? We won't want it. Well, our client's authorized to, in the negotiation, to provide for the removal of this building in the event the tenant is in default and fails to cure the default and willing to post a bond to ensure that that can be done. So I, I would think that might address to some degree the concern about what are we going to do with this building? Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much.
And we'll welcome Nicholas Goff up now, is my understanding.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. Thank you for having us tonight. Nicholas Goff is located down in Palm Beach, Florida, uh, under the direction of Jack Nicholas. And I am president of Nicholas Design. My name's Paul Stringer. One of the things that we look for when we're having an association of growing our business in terms of design, and we've designed 425 golf courses in over 40 countries and 40 states, is we look for a partner that really embraces the game of golf. And one of Jack's philosophy is to grow the game of golf, you have to get the kids, the juniors, and some of the underprivileged kids involved in the game. And when we had the opportunity to join with Todd Jester at Cheekwood to develop something that was really special for the community of Franklin, we were all on board. And so under the vision of Todd and the investors and Nicholas Design, what we're trying to do is enhance the golf out at Cheekwood by having a nine-hole par three, a seven-hole wraparound par three around an enhanced practice facility. What does all that mean? What that means is that we're giving back to the juniors and to the kids and to the schools a lifeline to a game that they can play a lifetime. And we think that's critical in growing the game of golf and also giving kids and adults and everyone an opportunity for recreation. An interesting point, National Golf Foundation, which is the body that really keeps track of how many people play golf in the country, came out and said the fastest-growing segment is women and children in the game of golf. The fastest to leave the game is women and children for three reasons. One is time, one is money, and one is difficulty. So we're trying to address all those factors by giving the City of Franklin something different in this community other than other golf courses and doing it in a professional manner that would keep up with the game of golf, the vision that Jack has and the vision that Todd Jester and the investors have for Cheekwood. Lastly, I will tell you that, um, we've been involved with many, many different vendors. Many of you know Toro Organization, Perry Ellis, um, many associations we've had throughout our years under Jack's tutelage. And we really feel like our relationship with Cheekwood and with, with Todd and the envision of what you're going to see here in a few minutes is really going to be something that everyone in the city will be very, very proud of and most of all, I think, will be very proud of. And that's why we're, we're here tonight is to support Todd Jester and, and Cheekwood and what we're trying to develop there. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. I think my job is kind of be the whipping boy because there's about 4,000 questions or untruths that's been said about this project. And I, what we want to do is, we have a video that kind of shows you, and I think it was sent to every one of y'all, maybe it wasn't, that explains what we're trying to do, the buildings that we're trying to build and try to make this a family-friendly atmosphere. I guess my thing, job is to tell you why this is a top golf, because everybody I run into says it's top golf. Top golf doesn't have a training facility. One of the deals that we have here is we're going to have a, a training facility that will be run by, by PGA professionals that bring in any, any age people. It could be kids who are beginning, it could be a high school kid who wants to get professional training, it could be a 45-year-old male or female who wants to get fitted for clubs. If you're a golfer, you're always tinkering with your game. You're always looking for a better driver, you're always looking, so we're going to have a facility to do that. Top golf doesn't have that. Top golf doesn't have nine holes, we're, doesn't have any golf holes, I'm sorry. We're going to have a nine-hole golf course and a seven-hole practice facility with a driving range and with a hitting bays that you can use. Top golf has hitting bays. Their hitting bays and our hitting bays are two different items, um, and I'll address that. We're not going to have flashy neon lights. Top golf has flashy neon lights. We're a golf-centric program. We're not a party-centric program. We're not going to be playing loud music. It will be a very soft background, part of a family atmosphere. This is a instructional vehicle for the City of Franklin for people of golf. If somebody that can start from the beginning to the end. We will have, enforce a USGA dress code where you, we want you wearing collared shirts and shorts and things like that. We, um, this is, this is going to be set up to be real golf and not go hit golf ball and try to hit it in a bright, bright blinking light. We do, we will have a two-acre putting green. Top golf doesn't have that. We do not and will not have, I think they were called woo-woo girls. We won't have that. This will be a professional staff and it will be a staff that has, will run and know how to run a golf facility. So it, it's really simple. It, it's, it's kind of, um, golf has evolved and, uh, I know some of you guys and girls play golf in this group and what, what we're seeing is today, you don't have, the people that have small children or people are busy, you know, they, they don't have four to five to six hours to go out and enjoy a round of golf. This is going to allow, no matter who you are, you can come in, you can go hit balls for 30 minutes or you can go, um, play nine holes or you can go practice your putting. So this is a, not even in the same realm as top golf. Yes, let me answer some questions that you have. Are we going to be serving alcohol at this facility? Absolutely. Are we going to be doing the things that, uh, uh, normal golf courses do in this area? Absolutely. So one of the issues brought up was, uh, well, are you going to play golf after dark? Well, this does have a facility that will have low, low lighting. It's, I'm not good at things, but auto-bond lighting is what it's, not auto-bond? Dark sky lighting. So what that means, instead of putting posts up and shining lights down, you shine them on the ground. And so you, you, it doesn't create a bright glowing effect, it's called dark sky. So, you know, I'm here to basically be the whipping boy and answer any questions that you have and tell you the truth of what we're really planning on. So I'm, I guess I'm wide open. Yes, sir?
Brad Alderman, McLendon.
How many hitting bays do you anticipate?
I'm, I'm not going to give you a wrong answer, so I want to get it exact. So these questions, have you heard them?
Yeah, question was the, how many-
Who are you?
I'm sorry, my name is Brandon Prentice with 906 Studio Architects, the project architect. Just helped develop the concepts and again, the designs at this point are conceptual. Just to give everybody an idea on, the designs are conceptual to give everybody an idea of what we're proposing. We've got some images in a PowerPoint that I think will help paint a better picture than me talking. The bays, we've got, uh, on the main building, scroll through, we've got a good shot of the back that'll show you, we've got 74 bays off the back, I believe that was the question. Here we go.
74 bays?
Yes, sir.
And if I rent a bay, is that by the hour?
Operationally, it's whatever they decide. They can rent it for the day, for the hour, it's however that- They can rent it for the day, for the hour, it's however that.
Can I rent it? Is it four people at a time in a bay?
The general size of those bays, usually it ends up being about four people. You could potentially have a few more.
Could I order a pitcher of beer and a basket of wings to one of 74 bays?
I believe so, yes, sir.
Answer that question, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. It is us to operate a family-centric place. Yes, you know, you're going to have people come and abuse the system. And that's normally, that's what we have laws in our town for, is for the people who abuse the system. What we're trying to create here is not a Topgolf. What we're trying to create here is a true family-centric, where I can take my kids, my grandkids, and go and hit balls, I can play nine holes. We're not going to have the blinking lights that you go by and flash, and the big tall poles that are made of silver, and everybody's going to see from the interstate.
But your, just your bay capacity alone is approaching 300 people?
It could be up to that much, yes, sir.
Ordering alcohol, your plan, ordering alcohol and food to the bay during your operating hours, which would be including after dark?
Yes, sir. If they choose to do that, they will have the opportunity to do that. Some will, some won't. Yes, sir.
Paul, could you maybe address just some of the technology that the hitting bays will have? I mean, I know this is not your persimmon woods that we grew up on.
No, sir. So the whole technology of golf has changed, and my golf experts come up here. I mean, I'm a golfer, I'm not a golf expert. So there's a whole difference. The technology of, you know, you've got Doppler, and you've got chips and balls and things like that, has tremendously changed. So I'll let Paul address that.
Yeah, this is something that's set up where if you're trying to learn about the game or you're with the technology in the bay, you can see exactly what happened right after you hit the ball. That's what's unique about it, other than a typical driving range. So like Paul was saying, it's all radar-based, and it'll give you immediate feedback, like in golf, how much your golf club is open, how far the carry was on the shot that you hit, the direction, the spin rate, the swing speed, all those type of variables, you get immediate feedback. And the reason people will come to the bays is because they want to be able to do that. They want to be able to do that. Then there are games that you can play within, let's say, four of your buddies, or two couples, or you have, you bring your kids and you're playing a closest-to-the-pin contest, it'll give you that feedback. It'll show up on the monitor, and each bay will have a monitor that will give you the feedback for what you just did.
Or if you want to play with a virtual course, you could play St. Andrews, Pebble Beach, probably, something like that?
That's correct. There'll be some indoor bays where people can play, and we have it in our office. We have a bay in our office down in Palm Beach where everything is simulated. So once we draw up the plans for the golf course and it goes into the computer, what it does is it gives you immediate hole, and you can play it, and it's a 3D animation of what that particular hole is, so you have the exact hole. So if you want to play the 17th hole at TPC Sawgrass, where you have the island green, you can play that hole. It just depends on which courses are fed into the computer. Not every course in the world are in there, but just a random amount.
Mayor, could I just?
Go ahead, Alderman, Martin.
You know, I know this is not a time for us to weigh in, but Paul, as I've told you, this has absolutely nothing to do with what we approved on the front end. This is a huge business right there, full of technology in a residential area, and there will be homes around it. But do you see where we are? We are here having approved a golf course that was the least invasive and obtrusive business, or not a business, but the least obtrusive thing that we could have in this area to save the land. And here we are with this huge business, like Palm Springs and Doral and all of those places. You know, we're just a little town wanting a golf course.
Yes, ma'am, and I agree.
And I don't mean, I don't mean to open up, I'm not arguing.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
I'm just saying that I've said this to you before.
Yes, ma'am.
And you understand where we're coming from.
Absolutely, absolutely. But it's offensive to say this is a Topgolf. It's offensive to the Nicholas Design Group. It's offensive to the people involved in this. When this was the concept in 2017, I don't know if we have the stuff that shows it, we showed a golf course and we showed a practice facility. I got involved in this about a year ago. So, yes, it has evolved. COVID has changed things. Things have changed over the last three to four years. We're still going to build a golf course. We're still going to create an environment where people can come out and play golf. We're going to create an environment, people can come out and get instructions. We're going to create an environment where people can come and hone in their skills. With this is set up, you're going to have an area you hit into that has three different pin positions, and you could be hit 81 yards, or you could be hit 87 yards, you could be 105. And then you're going to have pin positions over here. So, yes, I agree with you. It is somewhat different than what we spoke of in the very beginning. But the game of golf has changed, and it is changing quickly, and it's due to time constraints, it's due to the ability of people who play. Now, me personally, I want to go do an 18-hole golf course. I'm grown, my kids are grown, and I'm 58-years-old, and I got six hours. I got five hours. But my son, who has two children at the age of three and one, he's got about two, and he's got two and a half before the phone rings and the wife's saying, how you need to get home. So that's kind of what we're trying to do. We're trying to encompass a whole program where BGA, Franklin High School, all the schools around can come and have a practice facility. We want to encompass that. Our goals is, if we can get this approved, is to have a lot of, I really can't go real deep into where we're at on some of the things that are going on as far as teaching schools, as far as golf academies and things like that. But we're trying to also work with a local group that is, that, it's got to be real careful at this point, but we were trying to save a group that's here that has a tremendous youth program that we don't want to leave the city of Franklin. And I was with them today, talking, texting with them today, and they want this project.
Go ahead, Alderman, sure, sorry.
I've known all the guys and played golf with you many, many times. And, you know, my biggest concern is the lease itself.
Yes, sir.
And you have a wonderful lawyer who has represented me a couple of times. There's other things in that lease that are critical to the city of Franklin, more than just the four that were mentioned. And some of those, and as I understand it, that while it, you've struck a whole lot of things that are saying you're going to provide these kind of things, just like what you said.
Yes, sir.
But then it also says, are anything else that's within the scope of the law? So you have complete flexibility to do whatever you want to do on that particular site, and I'm very concerned about that. And so, I think, you know, in my case, I would want to see a lease that spelled out the things that you said. And you know, I've leased a lot of space in my life.
Yes, sir.
And I've signed a whole lot of leases in my life. And we put great restrictions on those leases because we still own the building when we lease to somebody else. The city still owns this property.
Yes, sir.
When they lease to somebody else. And we have the right, as the landlord, to put anything in there that we want to.
Yes, sir.
Now, you don't have to sign it, and I do think we should operate in good faith. But there are many things that you've talked about that I would like to see in the lease. And if you agree with that, and you agree to operate it that way and only that way, then I think there's some flexibility here. But Doug, you never mentioned any of those things as concerns. They're great concerns to me. And I can assure you that, I can assure you, but if what I saw of the lease, if my attorney looked at it, and he would never, ever, ever let me sign that lease, because it gives no, in fact, we're giving away total right to this property as soon as this lease is signed. And the city can't do that.
Can I, I'll be very respectful?
Yeah, please.
The one the city of Franklin sent me, my attorney said, don't sign it.
Well, I'm sure that.
So it was a negotiation.
And maybe that's where we are.
And that's, I don't think that's where we are, John. I think that in the operation of a normal business, you have things that you have to have. And, you know, you have to have operated hours. You have to have things like that, that are government, that can be regulated in the lease, which is, which we're saying we're willing to work with.
And you have to operate a business that we think you're going to operate.
Yes, sir.
And you have to agree to that.
Yes, sir.
All the time.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can't sublease the property to anybody else.
Correct.
There's lots of things in there that have to be in the list, not in anything I've ever seen.
Yes, sir. And the staff, I will say this, Doug and the staff have been extremely well to work with. And Doug, it's a 22-page lease? 22-page lease? So, yes, there's a lot of differences in there, but what we're trying to do today, because we, to get our program to go forward and to get our partners involved that want to be involved, we've got to have a lease on a project that's approved.
I agree.
And so, you know, when they ask me that, you know, we have to cut, when the lease says that we have to cut it off at dark, well, that's not normal operating hours for us. That's not what works for us. And so, there should be, I don't want to say up to 2:00 AM, no, sir. You know, I just want what the normal city of businesses of Franklin have. You know, we open 10 o'clock in the morning, and through the week, we close at 9, 10 o'clock at night. On Friday and Saturday night, we close 11 o'clock at night. That's what's normal in the city of Franklin, that people who operate businesses that have things to do.
And I'd like to maybe get one more comment, if I may, and not really, did you?
I'm done.
Okay. I don't really want us debating the lease.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think it's okay to make the.
I'm done.
Give some direction. I have Alderman, Barn Hill, and I think Mr. Stukey had a comment.
I'll say something, just kidding.
Just for the hell of it.
Okay.
If the board, we're concerned about the size and scale and scope of this project, we have, there's a building there, the Tennessee Golf Association, right?
So, that is honestly, sir, we have to be very careful right now with that. That is something that they are wanting to be very excited and be involved in, but they can't commit, can't sign until we have a program.
So we need to be, we need to be excited, but we need to be careful. We need, we are excited, but we need to be careful.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I'm just saying, if you look at the scale, if you look at what you've got there, if you look in 2017, Paul, and what you started out with, that is much more enormous buildings and facilities and whatever than what we've got. And I'm just asking about.
Yes, sir.
One thing there, and how that fits in, and how it fits into your program there.
Yes, sir, that's a good question, and I'm not, I'm not saying that they are going to be, yes, I'm saying we're negotiating and working with this group of people. They want to stay in the city of Franklin. They want to be involved in this program. They are excited. As a matter of fact, the exact email, or I should say text message I got from the person who runs it said, this is a game changer for us.
Alderman, Blatton.
I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you being here tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that looking behind the curtain and seeing the investors that are local people make a difference to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know where you live.
Yes, I know.
And I can find you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think that's important for the community to understand, too, that, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, I'm just saying, I think it's important that we have somebody who's got skin in the game, that has made this their home, their business, and you have a reputation that you want to continue to be, I wouldn't say spotless, but well. And I think that, and we beat the dead horse here, where we started was a golf course with a clubhouse, a nice clubhouse.
Yes.
But now it's more clubhouse than it is golf. I'm not a golfer. I understand that the game has changed, and there's different ways to play the game that people find fulfilling. I think we have to be sensitive about how this expanded footprint, expanded business affects the area in which we thought we were going to get something on a much lesser scale. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am, I agree with that.
And I'm not saying, support or deny, but I just think you've got to.
All right. The bill, it's kind of very difficult to look at this project, because we're showing you the building without showing you the whole project. The buildings on this project is less than 3% of the property.
Understood. And you're trying to show us that it's not Topgolf? And I get that.
Okay, so I hope I've been somewhat successful in that. I hope that we've been somewhat successful in trying to, we want to work and negotiate the lease. We want to get that figured out. I'll beg you, and Mr. Mayor, I know we're over time, but I beg you to let us show our video that we spent a lot of money on and got Nicholas here to do with us. We could indulge yourself for three to four minutes, I would be greatly appreciative.
And I'm going to let Mr. Stukey say a few words.
Okay, no problem.
You're welcome to sit down.
Just a comment, and we're not here to negotiate leases in public in this setting, and as you said upfront, that makes a lot of sense. But what is here is a tension between what was presented and the board directed us to work on four years ago. And we've talked about that. It's moved from a expansion of the golf course, from an executive course to a full regulation course, a smaller clubhouse and a surface hitting, driving bay, or driving range that would go with it. So that is, that's moved to what you're seeing now, which is 74 hitting bays on three stories, and the modifications with the teaching and training facility, and now a par-three course. So there's tensions there of what you directed us to work on and what it looks like today. And there's been many iterations through that time, and staff has tried to work diligently with the team to talk through those. Some of it involves the large wetlands that's on the site. There are a lot of complicating factors. But I'll tell you, we need you to weigh that, because it is different. And we've heard more specifics tonight from Mr. Pratt about what it will be and what it won't be than we've heard in months and months of discussion. And I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
But that needs to be translated into the lease document. The inherent problem we've had is extremely broad language that could allow almost anything on this site. And once we sign the lease, it's done. We've lost our ability to manage that and work with that. So we need, that's why we need the specificity.
Yes, sir.
We need the commitment. We need to know what it will be and what it won't be. And so, that's really important, and that's what we have struggled with for a long time.
Agreed.
And I will tell you, working on these types of understandings and agreements in a lot of different settings, that is always a concern when it's that hard to get the specifics out.
Correct.
That is what I would call a red flag. And we've got to get past that. If we can't get past that, I can't in good faith recommend an agreement that does not lock in what this will be and what it won't be. You know, there are a couple other things I would touch on. I don't dispute what Mr. Hale brought up. I wouldn't maybe frame them exactly how he talked about them. But there are issues that were touched on. We don't have an agreement necessarily on how the lease payments will be, what level they'll be at, how they'll be phased in. The language around any subleasing or assignment of lease operations is critical, because that has implications. We want to understand your business plan. We understand your partnerships, be it with Nicholas Golf or with Tennessee Golf Association or whoever else it might be. We want to see those and what that looks like, and how that partnership enhances this operation. So those are all things that we need to know to be able to, in good faith, move forward and bring something that this board could consider. You know, I'll just close with the idea that, you know, we want something the community will be proud of. This is a community publicly-owned asset, technically actually owned by the water customers of this community. And so, if we're assigning it to someone, we need to see a public benefit to it. And we have struggled with understanding what especially the larger clubhouse and the entertainment component of that will look like. And we've asked for specifics to understand. We haven't talked about the netting, how high that will be. We have asked a third party to help us assess that. The more data we can get from you, that will be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Because we all see and we all fear the massive netting and fencing that you see at a Topgolf.
Correct.
And I know that's a dirty word to you all, but we need to know that it won't be that, and how that will work. And we need data to help understand that.
Absolutely.
And when you're talking three stories, you're talking a somewhat limited footprint, how does that lay out? And what we've asked from the beginning is help us connect the dots to understand why it's different, why it isn't. We've heard a little more about that tonight than we've ever heard. It does also involve artif- It does also involve artificial turf, not natural grass. How's that going to work? You know, all of these, all these elements that need to be flushed out. And so that's what staff's trying to work on, to do something that will be closer to what you already, what you originally directed us to deliver. And then where it's different, let's make that very clear so that the board can make an informed decision. So that's been our focus throughout this, that will continue to be our focus. And the more we can get specifics from you, you know, images are great.
Agreed.
But commitments are better.
Agreed.
And we need that.
And so to answer your question, I'm kind of the bulldog now, so if you give me time, we'll get it done.
Mayor, I'd like to say one thing. Please do. I'm glad you found Topgolf offensive. It appears we've gotten your attention. But when you build that building with permission and a lease to sell alcohol and chicken wings to 300 people at a time after dark, and there's no prohibition about subleasing, and there's, and there's not so far any events of default that would require, for example, a Nicholas design to remain involved, and you've built the physical infrastructure for a Topgolf, and if you tire of it and want out, and we can't stop it with the lease, then we get Topgolf. And I won't do that.
I agree with you, I won't either.
So, so I'm glad that we agree what we don't want.
Yes, sir.
Now, let the lawyers write it that way.
Yes, sir.
Because I've said it enough. Okay? I don't, I'm fine with a top-notch, world-class golf instruction facility here. I think people drinking beer while playing golf is American, okay? I'm for it, okay? I think it would be great to have that somehow also cobbled together in a family-friendly atmosphere, so that the place, I don't even care if it's a whole different place at 4:00 when the high school kids leave, and at 9:00 when the grownups leave, okay? I don't care about any of that. But I'm not going to sit here and get hokey-doked into, "We'll figure it out," and then you build a three-story, 74-bay with a big kitchen, and turn it over to Topgolf. Because you'll cash out, good for you, but they'll be asking me how that happened. So I'm glad we're all on the same page.
Yes, sir. I agree with you. I have no intentions, or this investor rep has no intention, of having a Topgolf, period.
It's okay, we're going to continue to move forward through this. Thank you, Mr. Pratt.
Can I beg you to show the video? Please? Is it two minutes? It's two minutes. And I'll sit down.
Have you got it loaded? Show it, and we'll move forward quickly. And while they're getting it loaded, would there be any questions on 16 or 17?
Thank y'all.
So we'll, we're okay, and then we'll try to, do you want to hold off on item 15 till next time, or do we need to go through that one, Mr. Stukey?
Okay. We should probably talk about that, too. We should probably talk about that, too, at least.
Okay.
Have an initial discussion on that.
Go ahead and roll it.
Our vision for Cheekwood's future is a premier golf facility at the top of its game. Nicholas Design, the world's foremost golf course design firm, is partnering with Todd to create this beautiful course. Nicholas Design has completed more than 425 spectacular golf courses all over the world. The full expansion of Cheekwood Golf Club will be designed and engineered to include transforming the existing course into a nine-hole course accessible to the public and capable of hosting local, state, and national tournaments. A practice area where junior golfers will learn the game's rules and etiquette and hone their skill level. Three-tier covered hitting stalls combining state-of-the-art technology with a family-friendly social atmosphere. A driving range with soft, contained lighting. Uncovered hitting stations and practice areas that enable year-round instruction and recreation. The Golf Performance Center, where students of all ages will be taught by PGA golf professionals. The Golf House and Club Facilities, with space to host social, corporate, and community gatherings. A restaurant, serving southern cuisine. Six custom southern homes. Improvement of the floodplain area by 150%. And the installation of a public trailhead and beautiful greenways connecting Cheekwood to Franklin's park system. Cheekwood Golf Club is committed to protecting the environment of our property and will strive to meet the certification goals established by Audubon International, the leader in environmentally sustainable management practices. Cheekwood is primed and ready. We invite your support and ask for your vote for the expansion of the Nicholas Golden-Baird Cheekwood Golf Club, where we will create a treasured community asset for everyone to enjoy, while also generating stable, long-term revenue for the city.
Boogity, 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 let's go golfing. We're ready. Are you?
Item 15, Resolution 2021-112, a resolution to accept and recommend approval amendment forward to the comprehensive transportation network plan, major thoroughfare plan to the Franklin Municipal Planning Commission.
I'll be as brief as I can. So this, this really started with feedback that we got in the West Harpeth area. Received feedback from multiple property owners, multiple developers, wanting to eliminate a significant number of roadways that we had, mainly because of the densities that we were projecting out there. We've sat down with them, gone over density projections. We feel very confident at this point, eliminating those two minor collector roadways, and they've committed to doing lower-density developments out there. So the major thoroughfare plan needs to be changed in order to allow that to occur. We also, in the Seward Hall area, working with a developer to realign Market Street. It allows Market Street to be constructed from Clovercroft all the way down to Highway 96. It also limits impacts to adjacent developments, and we need to have that updated so that that development as well can proceed. As we continued, as we looked at the major thoroughfare plan, we also took a look at a few other items that needed change. One was from the Cool Springs Transportation Network Study. One of the recommendations was to increase, or change the typical sections in the Cool Springs area, as it goes from more of a suburban design to more urban design, to have wider sidewalks. So we did update our typical sections to have eight-foot-wide sidewalks, more urbanized in the Cool Springs area versus a typical multipurpose trail or a five- or six-foot sidewalk. The other change that we made was looking at traffic projections in our modeling, with McEwen being built as a four-lane median-divided roadway, eventually working with Brentwood, Williamson County, going over to Clovercroft. We felt we could take Liberty Pike and reclassify it as a minor, from a minor arterial to a minor collector road. It's unlikely that we would ever widen Liberty Pike through the McKay's Mill area to be a four- or five-lane road. It's just, it's not going to, it's not going to happen, and that's really one of the reasons why we're pushing McEwen. So we proposed to reclassify that. In addition, we updated all the project sheets to include right-of-way whiffs, cost estimates, et cetera, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Alderman, Martin.
You know, you hear what you want to hear. I want to hear you say that you're widening the regular sidewalks, new sidewalks, greater than five feet.
Yes, ma'am. In the Cool Springs area, our recommendation is to go to a minimum of eight-foot-wide sidewalks.
What about everywhere else? Like Hillsborough, like Murfreesboro Road, they ought to be, they ought to be wider. You can't, you can't take a stroller down that road.
I'm going to take a step back, actually. If we pull up the example, Murfreesboro Road is actually included. So it's really those commercial core areas. So Cool Springs area, but also Murfreesboro Road's included in that, the commercial areas.
They're pushing a lot of strollers?
But we're given a very specific instruction on Murfreesboro Road sidewalk.
And that is included for eight-foot-wide sidewalks on Murfreesboro Road. We just need to get across that interchange.
Any other questions or comments? Everybody's happy with 16 and 17? We'll see you in 15 minutes.
Yes, sir.